Motion for Troy, second looks like from Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Those from last meeting, last month?
Motion.
Second from Troy, all in favor?
Aye.
Who are up? Installed water service at three ten West Fifth. Got service installed at two oh two and two eleven West Jackson. We got the pool all winterized, the covers installed. We got upcoming demo and installation of about two hundred and eighty little feet of sidewalk on Seventh Street. Friday we'll get all the tables, trash cans, and road closure. I've set up for the street fair for this weekend. Been having some lift station voltage issues. Electric's been troubleshooting those. We've come down, it's a possibility with IMPA solar, giving us spikes. Dirk's, Dirk had a meeting today, there's a few guys that are coming down, gonna install some different components. See if we can't take care of the situation. We've also got the American Pump guys on it. See if we can change some voltage settings within the lift stations and take care of the problems. We had broke pole, couple broke poles out at Viewer Hills. The guys worked through, replaced the services there, set a new pole. They also installed a new service nine oh one East Second and temporary at two eleven West Jackson.
Okay, we had a meeting last night. Did you have a couple guys that could put the parts in place? Ready to go, plug into there, or just take it out of boxes, probably plug in place.
Probably oughta run a hard pipe drain on it.
Is there a place to drain it to, or?
Well, we're thinking what, stool, flange maybe, or something? Oh no, main floor. I just have to plug them in and, and, that. Wow.
Biggest one goes in the basement, correct?
Think so, wasn't it? That's where all the moisture was. In the second floor, the apartment was. Three of them.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Small, medium, and large.
Questions for Jesse, anyone?
It's a match. Fifty. We've already got it, we've got a budget item. Four sidewalks. The money we set aside just for sidewalk programs.
Yes.
You always didn't use any last year, Mike. Nobody did program, but we still had them.
We've got that, and then we're redoing step in front of hub. Give them two, two short steps instead of the one seven inch.
Money else? Hey, grab it, you know, Mark?
Rich and I attended the U.S. Attorney General's Ball Conference last week in Indianapolis. Helps us get our hours for the year, plus a couple of the state mandates that are required. I got with Matt on the Charger. Tahoe is really racking up the money. So, he said the carrier bearings shocked that they didn't buy a part. Said that was the question. So, NAPA can get one, four hundred and twenty dollars. Then we're also gonna need two new tires. Eight bit.
What was that?
That's all I got.
Questions for Terry, anyone? Jim, you are up. Terry Shields, somebody minister. If you don't have a microphone, do you have anything? Okay. Painting to the Rackliff subdivision. Now he's told me to. Ironed out, whatever meeting. Questions for Terry, anyone? Anything else?
All right, on to old business. Kristin, I'll need your help on this one. It's twenty twenty-six budget adoption ordinance. Is there a number for that ordinance? Okay. We just need a motion to go ahead and approve that at this point. We've already had the preliminary meeting, so. Need a motion to approve the budget, twenty twenty-six budget next year? Right, you have a second? Second, again, all in favor? All right, thank you. The next one's the excess levy appeal resolution. And that's to what, obtain us an extra, was it, I believe fifty thousand dollars? Is that what we could get? Okay. And this will be the last year to get that, correct? So, do we need to go ahead and make a motion? Okay. That's the one that he talked about at the last meeting. We get a motion to apply for that? We get a motion? Okay, from, second? Second from Tom, all in favor? Okay, the next one is Maple Street ordinance that Stu had talked about. It will cover a couple different things, a couple different ways to look at it. We all talked about it, and he rewrote it the way we wanted it. So, we get a motion to pass the ordinance, twenty twenty-five oh two? You have a second? Second from Tom, all in favor? Okay. It does, it is Kerry's discretion, he will be in charge of that. Don't look so happy. All right, under new business, this is ADA grievance procedure. ADA, coordinated resolution, ADA, section five oh four plan, and ADA plan. We need a motion to approve all of that. Can we approve it all together at one time, Kristin? I thought we could, so, okay. We get a motion to approve all of the ADA stuff for this year?
It's the updated plan.
Yeah. New stuff from N.DOT, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, you have a second? All in favor? All right. All right, on to everybody on the agenda, but we do have Steve Hiltonbrand here. Steve? Nice to finally meet you, I've talked to you a few times through the last few years. Say nice to finally meet you, I've talked to you a few times in the last few years. Yes, yes.
All right, good evening, everybody. My wife and I, Diane, we bought a couple lots down here on Jackson Street, two oh two and two eleven West Jackson. And basically, the reason I'm here tonight is we are building a couple of rentals there. We have the permits and everything for it. We've got the water hooked up, we've got the electric hooked up. We have, me and my buddy Danny Brown, we are both union pipe fitters. And we've taken the last two weeks off to get the properties ready for concrete forms and rough in, which we plan on doing next week. And we have two campers down there. The plan is, these things are gonna go up, and we're, we plan on having renters in them by Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, with us working in Indianapolis, it would just be easier for us if we left the campers here, so we can work on this in the evenings. And really, what I'm asking for is permission. We've got the neighbors' approval, I mean, we've got the best neighbors ever down there. We've got Mike right here for his support.
Well, I'm glad, they're probably glad to see you down there cleaning up, putting new homes down. I talked to Jesse, we talked last night. I don't see a problem whether they said we could get temporary service hooked up to you, so.
Yeah, yeah, we got.
Guys, we got two new homes going in town down there. We have.
Yep, yep. Yeah, yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, I think we're good with that, and very long as you know that and Jesse, I think we're all good. Questions?
We're good. Not gonna be any trouble.
So, there won't be anybody down? As far as talking nighttime, you, did you say campers or cameras?
Campers.
Campers.
Campers, yeah.
So.
Gonna stay there while he's building them?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are they at times?
Yeah, through the day.
Something we can.
Yeah, we got, like I said, we got neighbors that are watching our backs already, so, no big deal.
Yep. Yeah, I think it'll all work out.
Yeah, all right, I appreciate it, guys.
Right, thank you. Dave Moody, glad to see you. Been a while. Oh, I understand.
I just wanted to give you a quick update. Yesterday I asked Jesse and Connie to come out. Looks like our numbers are pretty good. We've got cyanide seems to be the, an issue that's popped its head up just recently. So, I asked Jesse and Connie to come out, so we can talk about it. They've offered up if we need some help from your consultant, but, and I've said not yet. Let's, let us do a little more of our due diligence to understand where we're at. We'll go from there. As far as an update on the TIF money, we have, all three items have been purchased.
Okay.
One of them is in, so it is completely paid for, and I will give you guys the invoice along with our, our payables that show that it's paid.
Okay.
The other two were not here, we won't be here till after Thanksgiving, a little later. And I've got the invoice that shows where we've put the fifty percent down. I don't know if you want them, just to have an update, but I have it for you guys to look at.
That'll be up to Kristin, whatever she needs to keep her books straight.
Yeah, I know you're not paying for that, you know, the ones that aren't paid for yet, but if you wanna just, I just wanna keep you guys up to date at where we're at. I got one here that I, I'll give her, and then if you guys wanna pay it, that's fine. If you don't, still, if you wanna wait to get them all in, I don't know what you wanna do. Yeah, that's fine with me. And the only other thing I need from you guys is how are you gonna want us to buy it back? So, I mean, check? And you tell me, and how much, it, what, ten dollars per, per unit? Okay.
Pretty good deal, isn't it?
Yeah, great deal.
Right, Dave, you said your numbers are pretty good, so you have one piece of equipment left to put in or two then?
Two. Uh, one's, one's just, help us get rid of the sludge.
Okay.
But the, the big one we're waiting on is one that's gonna put the final touches.
Okay.
To make sure we're gonna be, gonna be good.
Good, all right. Very good.
It's, it's been, it's been a long road. I think there is a letter that, for a construction permit, that the town's gonna have to sign Connie or Jesse or, that we didn't cross our Ts and dot our Is when we filed for the construction permit. And it's just a letter stating that you guys are aware that we're doing the work down there on the.
Okay.
It's just something we forgot. Our consultant's writing that letter, and then I'll deliver it to Jesse.
Okay.
If he can't sign it, then we'll let. Other than that, we're heading in the right direction.
All right, thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Glad you're feeling better?
Yeah.
Right, any other public comments, anybody else tonight? Dee?
You would like to know what you are doing out there on the Rackliff subdivision, because I was called by the lawyer that you had said to give me a call about that, that basically we're being blackmailed, whether the whole entire neighborhood out there has to say that they're gonna be fine with ten houses, or he's gonna put some rentals out there.
I don't think anybody's being blackballed, I think that was a solution, or a possible solution from Stu. I mean, he mentioned that to me, he said that, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's AG one, and it's not a town council, not our decision. It will be a decision between probably attorneys, zoning committee, and zoning appeals. It is not us. But it's bottom line, Stu said it is zoned AG one. AG one is pretty wide open. That he could put a dairy farm out there if he wanted to, and there's nothing you can do about it being zoned AG one.
So, why is it zoned residential AG? So, there's a hyphen on there, if you go onto the county website, it says residential.
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, who, who knows, Terry, do you know? You know what?
All I know is.
And stop at ten. Kind of depends how you wanna look at it. I, I, I don't know. It's just too bad that somebody out there didn't buy that property. Was it, okay, I, I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Have you talked to Lori Jordan from USDA over at Covington? Um, Lori Jordan, USDA over at Covington, her office over there? Somebody you might talk to, she can say, you know, yes or no, does it meet all the criteria? Yeah. I know of a gentleman just built a house down south, and he used her, and they looked at the property out there. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, our two mile radius has so many holes in it. It was put in in the 90s to stop the hog farms. That's what it was kind of tied and related to and really hasn't been updated and it just, that's what Stu said. He said this thing is full of loopholes that it really doesn't have any teeth in it whatsoever. Until it got dug into a little bit more. Nothing's been changed yet, I mean. Yeah, that's not ours. There you go, you would know that answer. We've got an X electoration here. It is not. They do. Sure they do. It would be, but. I don't know if we do now. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. All right, anybody else, anything? Right? Okay. Other than that, the only announcement I have, the Vetersburg Street Fair is this Saturday from 4 to 10. Tom? Roy? Ken? All right. Anybody? Thank you everybody for coming. Meeting adjourned.